Ladies, oh, get closer. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm honored to call to order this special town meeting. Today is November 19th, 2024. The time is seven o'clock. We need a quorum of 100 voters. We have 228 voters present. Tellers have been sworn, they are Paul Basler, Jim Soule, and Kevin Flattou. The warrant has been previously declared and properly noticed with the constable's return to service. As tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all those who have passed, all those residents who continue to find the strength, resilience, and courage to endure these political, economic, and social challenges facing not only our town, but our state and Thank you. At this time, I will briefly discuss the rules of town meeting. Town meeting is run per town meeting time in our local bylaws. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to one of the microphones, one in each aisle. Wait to be recognized by me. State your name and address. Please keep comments to under two minutes, and you may approach the microphone a second time, but only with new information, and please keep these comments to under one minute. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. Motions to amend may be made, but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raises issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, or the integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interfere with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in town meeting, please yell out question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you are trying to speak at the microphones. Please do not stand in the doorways, try to, and try to keep the aisles clear, and take conversations outside. I hope to continue to have a spirited debate and that this meeting both supports and challenges the issues presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you may not debate and then make the motion. Please be respectful to everyone. It is okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand the rules? Does everyone know where the exits are? The back and the sides. Bathrooms are in the hallway. Does someone have an open emotion?
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Kate Fedoroff, town council. Keith Hickey, town administrator. Kathleen Barrett, finance director and town accountant. David Walsh, the wastewater treatment superintendent. Tina Betty, human resource manager. Matthew Pennella, conservation agent. Jill Prue, superintendent of schools. Sarah Hickey, director of business services, Silver Lake Regional School District. Joyce Kristofolsky, health agent. Brian Holmes, police chief. Laura Casey Pupick, the police chief's assistant. Maureen Clark, principal assessor. Robert Cuoco, facilities manager. Donald Cologne, library director. Adam Hatch, deputy fire chief. Kristen Berger, water department engineer from Resilient CE. And Mr. Thomas Bott.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Before we move to the articles, Eric has a presentation he'd like to make, so please.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Paul Basler to come up and stand next to me. So for those that don't know, Paul Paul has been our highway superintendent for the past 23 years, and he just recently retired. So this is what he has to put up with for tonight. So, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, it's not often that we get the opportunity to reflect on the impact one person has had on a community, but today we're reminded just how crucial Paul Basler's work has been. For more than 23 years, he has led the Highway Department with integrity, skill, and an unwavering commitment to keep our roads and infrastructure safe, reliable, and functioning, no matter the challenge. With perpetual and annual budget constraints and navigating federal and state grants, Paul has always made it work. In rainstorms, blizzards, and the wear and tear of daily life, Paul and his team were always there, from overseeing the repair and maintenance of our roads to guiding crews through countless emergencies. They worked tirelessly to ensure that every restaurant, every resident could travel safely. The department's success was built on more than just hard work. It was grounded in Paul's leadership, problem-solving abilities, and the respect he earned from everyone around him. But beyond the technical expertise and long hours, there's something even more remarkable, the spirit with which Paul approached the job. He treated everyone with fairness and professionalism, leading by example and inspiring trust. No task was too big or too small, and no matter how difficult the situation, Paul always found a way to make things work. We will miss his steady hand, but we also know that he has more than earned the chance to step away, enjoy, enjoy more time with family, and embark on new adventures. Retirement is a time to reflect on all that's been accomplished, and for Paul Basler, that legacy is substantial. Paul is also a Kingston resident, and over the years, he's volunteered on many committees and working groups, and he's counted votes here at countless town meetings and worked elections. Knowing Paul, he'll continue to serve his town in one way or another, even if only to serve as someone to call for advice with all the institutional knowledge that he's gained over three decades of service. Paul, you've been a great role model as a, as a resident, serving your community on so many, volunteering so many hours, and thanks to your family for, for putting up with it as well. So as we say goodbye to Paul in this role, let's express our deepest gratitude. Thank you, Paul, for your years of service, your dedication to our community, and for setting a standard that will be hard to match. We wish you nothing but happiness and fulfillment in the next chapter of your life. Congratulations, and enjoy every moment of your well-deserved retirement.
I, I know we want to get to the articles, there's one more individual that I'd like to say a few words. He asked for an hour. I told him he had four minutes, and he's promised to keep it under four minutes, so please introduce yourself, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Thomas Bott. My name is Thomas Bott, and for years, I was the town planner here in Kingston, Mass. My long history with the town is short compared to Paul's, who was raised in Rocky Nook. Since starting as a laborer in 1995, Paul worked through the ranks, and in 2001 was appointed the highway super. He started under 11 town administrators and likely three times that number of committees. That's 7,250 workdays and lord knows how many nights, from committee meetings and snowstorms to work his day job that went well into the night. While most of Kingston slept, he was up all night, and during snowstorms, I could watch full fodder, concerned about the safety of his people, those driving the trucks, and those who woke up to ice-free blacktops. Those nights are just part of the job. And while many of us here have all-wheel-drive vehicles, when Paul bought a new truck a few years ago, he bought a two-wheel drive, saying, "If I need all-wheel drive, I'm not doing my job." Back in the day, the near impossible standard to meet for highway superintendents was set by Carl Atwood, who started documenting information on computers back when paper, computer paper had beige and green stripes across it. We still use those photocopy pages today. And people were likely concerned, what are we going to do without Carl and the vast institutional knowledge he had? Paul Basler is the Carl Atwood of his generation. And while Paul spent a few years away from the town he loves as a CB, that branch of the Navy that does engineering and construction on the battlefield, while he was stationed in Hawaii, he did such a great job, they sent him to the South Pole. No wonder Paul hates the cold and the snow. He learned many skills that would serve him and his community. The CB's model is, motto is, "We build, we fight," and Paul's fought for his community through many budgets, capital plannings, and town meetings. And while Paul has many accomplishments and no one of his praises is at the transfer station, the idea of the design was largely his overseeing the operation. So when a woman lost her engagement ring in the trash, who better than Paul to dive into the hopper and sort through the bags of garbage till he found the ring? Paul tells me he was glad it was cooler, so there was less squiggly things in the trash. I can tell you the charm and charisma will only take you so far, so Paul had to be really good at his job, and since many people who might point out that something was broken in the morning still wasn't fixed by lunch. But Paul will point out that his job is not a job he did alone. He had help from crews, volunteers, and contractors. One volunteer, Ruth Ann Cassidy, who summered in Rocky Nook as a child, worked in the planning department and the highway department for 18 years. Paul was her yard guy, her handyman, who helped Ruth Ann with all sorts of chores in Rocky Nook. And as Ruth Ann was slipping away from us, Paul was her onsite nursemaid, especially as she was experiencing sundown syndrome, often spending the night at her cottage or her house in Brockton to help ease her mind and comfort her. And when she couldn't live independently, he would visit her, whether at Wingate or in Wilmington, Mass. I will tell you that heroes don't wear capes, and angels don't need wings. Public service is a choice that many of us make and are not cut out, and many of us are not cut out for it. It's especially hard to work in the community you work in and live in, but Paul has faced the challenge to be the face of the streets, trees, and parks in the town he loves every day and many, many nights. While it'd be great to have the gift that is Paul Basler for longer, even for a highly skilled man, it isn't quite possible. So I thank you very much for having me the opportunity to celebrate my friend Paul. God bless, have a great retirement. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you from the deepest part of my heart for allowing me to serve as your highway superintendent for the last 23 years, part of the highway department for the last 29, and as a resident of the town for 55 years. It's been my, my pleasure to try to help each and every one resident in this room and in this town when they had to deal with either the highway department or the transfer station. Like Tom said, and like Eric said, I'm very proud of the transfer station we have. Words cannot explain how proud I am of, a year ago, your highway department, your water department, your fire department, your police station, all ran by guys that started at grade one in elementary school, went through the Silver Lake School District, and were departmented in this town. I'm very proud of the town that we are today, and I look forward to what town's going to be in the next 15 or 20 years. Thank you so much for this great, great thing.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a reminder, the doors have to remain clear, the aisles have to remain clear unless you're at the microphone, so if you can have a seat, that's fine. I know some people have back problems and they have to stand at the back, but to the extent you can sit, please do, and try to keep the doorways clear. Thank you. Ready? Okay. Article one, establishment of MBTA zoning district, majority vote, being presented by Just identify yourself, please.
Hi, Tom Bouchard, Six Quail Run. I'd like to move this article. Move that the town, amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws as follows. One, by adding terms relevant to the new proposed MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD, to section's two definitions. Two, by modifying section 3.1.1b overlay zoning districts under section three zoning districts to add reference to the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. Number three, by modifying section six overlay district 6.1.1a to add a new MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. And four, to amend the town of Kingston official zoning map to include the MCMOD overlay district as printed herein.
We have a second.
Sir, we have a PowerPoint presentation to present to you. The PowerPoint presentation is just a, is just a list of facts that Val has prepared along with others in town hall, including the town administrator. It's not biased, it's just a list of facts. During that, I will present some things that are my opinion as I am presenting this article. I will tell you this, the MBTA zoning, if you don't know what it is, is a zoning that has been forced on towns that are in or near MBTA access. As far as I'm concerned, the whole thing is ridiculous. I don't like 40Bs that the state has forced on us. I don't like this MBTA zoning that the town is, the state has forced on us. And to make it worse, they've blackmailed us into saying if we don't pass it, they'll take away our grant money. So, that being said, I, I went to the, the select board, and I went to the planning board, and I said, "I'm going to fight this to the end." And then Val came up with a plan, Val Massad, our town planner. She came up with a plan that made it very possible that it would not only not hurt the town of Kingston, we're in a very unique situation compared to other towns, including Plumpton and Halifax and others. We're in a unique situation. We have the district subzone A that you'll see in this, and, and also B that are already developed and are perfect to accommodate this, and, and I will say this, as much as it irks me, I'm going to try to explain to you that I hate this, but I'm going to vote for it. Doesn't make sense to a lot of people, but once I have looked into this and I see the plan, and I realize that our town, if you look at what we have in this town, all the open space, all these things, we wouldn't have any of this without grant money. We wouldn't have a lot of things that we have without grant money. All the people down at Blackwater Swamp, and, and the Silver Lake Sanctuary, the Cranbury Reserve, all that happened because of grant money. It would not have happened. There's so many things that we need grant money for. We have a well project coming up, and many other things that you'll see in this PowerPoint project. PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Tom.
Just introduce yourself, Al, okay? Just introduce yourself, please.
Valerie Massad, I'm the town planner. I'm a resident at One Schofield Road.
Push the microphone down a little. Yep, put the word on that, thank you.
One Schofield, can you hear me? All right. Resident, One Schofield Road, Valerie Massad, town planner. And it's my job tonight to walk you through an overview of this Article one, the MBTA zoning. So behind me, you can see that there's a, a map of all the towns and cities that have been affected by this new law the state has passed, where anybody that has, say, a railroad station, or a bus station, or a subway station, or is next to one of those places, is affected by this bylaw. That adds up to 177 cities and towns that have been impacted.
Can we turn on the lights, sir?
It's above my pay grade. Anybody? Are these available, please? Is this part of the handout?
What?
Was this part of the handout?
No.
Keep going, please.
Okay, I'll keep going. So the reason that the state enacted this law is because of the housing crisis. And an example in Kingston about the housing crisis is that right now, on average, there might be a handful of houses that are on the market at any given time, and the average median price is $650,000. Housing is becoming unaffordable in Massachusetts. So the state has enacted this law in order to try to encourage towns to zone for other kinds of housing besides single-family housing, and that means that condos or other types of multifamily is something that they're looking for. And they've come at this with a carrot and stick approach, as Tom mentioned. So for Kingston, that means that we're being asked to produce zoning for 805 units in town. That is something where we were stops short when we were looking at it. As your town planner and as a resident, I found that very frustrating, and we talked to the state for about a year, and we were able to get a waiver of where that has to be. So the law says it has to be about a half mile of the train station, but we know that our mall is failing. We know that Macy's is going to close soon, and we know that we just built 282 apartments up there at the mall. So we asked the state, is there a possibility that we could waive that requirement and move some of this zoning so that it would be over top of the mall to help incentivize redevelopment of the mall? And they said yes. So with that, we're able to count 282 units that are already built. This map shows you, in the blue line, the half-mile radius from the train station. This has already been previewed by the state, it meets their requirements. It includes the existing 282 units that have been built. It excludes Macy's and Target. There's no negative impact to the existing buildings and businesses that are there. The districts are away from other residential development. There's existing infrastructure. There's already parking, there's already industrial-scale roads, there's an exit ramp, there's water and sewer in the ground, and there's vast parking available. It's also, if you look at this map, much smaller footprint than the already existing mall redevelopment overlay district that town meeting approved, shown in the red line.
Excuse me. I'd like to jump in and just make mention that if you look at this, Subdistrict A is built on by commercial properties, there's, to make you more familiar, there's A-plus storage, there's Dorchester Arning, all places that are not likely to ever be, have housing on them. And then there's Subdistrict B. I wanted to make mention, because I've seen and heard rumors, that this was, had something to do with the 40B that was proposed along Hilltop Ave, which is the access to the elementary school. This is not in this district. The Hilltop Ave present, 40B is not included in this, these districts. It's not part of this at all, it's completely separate, and I wanted that, to make that clear. Thank you.
So this is just a close-up aerial view of the two districts, so you can see that we're looking at Subdistrict B, which is the mall central. Thank you.
Is that better?
Okay.
Do you need more? Did everyone see that?
More?
One more?
All right, I'll keep going. So as Tom was pointing out, we have existing successful businesses that we don't anticipate, although they could, we don't anticipate that those businesses in Subdistrict A, it's not as likely that someone would find that they wanted to stop their business, assimilate this land with others, and then try to put apartment buildings there. We know that it's possible, but it's not as likely. And then if you look at Subdistrict B, it's Kingston Collection without Target, and without Target's parking, without Macy's, and without Macy's parking. It includes the apartments, the 282 units. The capacity in, in Subdistrict A is about 150 units, so when you do the math, you're talking about, about 350 units at the mall. Go to the next slide. So what does that mean to redevelop the mall for Kingston? Back in 2009, the mall was valued at $98 million for taxes. Today, that mall is worth $9 million. That's a huge difference in terms of the value of the mall, and we're going to lose Macy's shortly. So the goal here is to try to get a sense what that means for us in dollars if we redevelop the mall. And we know that redeveloping malls on the South Shore involves building some mixed use, including some housing, to get enough people close to the retail and commercial to make it a successful endeavor. And when you look at this and you take into account the existing apartments, the total property taxes that we're getting in 2025 is $1.3 million. And if we took the $2,009 values and added the apartments to that, the revenue would be $2.04 million, a difference of over $640,000 annually in tax revenue after we redevelop the mall and it comes back to a successful development. What the law doesn't do, it doesn't require us to build the units, we just have to zone for it. It doesn't require communities to pay for the infrastructure to support the housing that might be developed. It doesn't, doesn't override the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act or Title V, which is the Health Department's code, and it doesn't provide us options for waivers or exemptions from compliance with the law. Permitting is subject to site plan review. We would regulate vehicular access, emergency access, pedestrian and vehicular circulation. As I mentioned earlier, we already have the roads, we already have the signals, we already have the exit ramp. It would regulate architectural design, landscaping, buffering, and screening. The 10% affordable bylaw that we have in the town would apply to this district. And here's the stick, access to grant funding. As we mentioned, we rely heavily on it here in Kingston, unlike some of the other communities who have voted down this act. We received $8.28 million in the last 10 years in order to do our sewer and water infrastructure to support Lowe's, Amazon, elevated routes, and the apartments at the Kingston Collection. We've also received $595,000 and another $1.6 million for open space acquisition in the last 10 years, when there were situations where we wanted to protect land from being We know that we have other projects coming up where we would need support from grant funding. Last year, the state gave $160 million, 161 million, to 171 communities. We know that we're going to need a $4 million water tank, a $5.5 million well and pump station. We have several infrastructure projects that we're working on, one including a roundabout at the school, the possibility of improving walkability and road safety throughout the town, and brownfield redevelopment for some of the older properties that are contaminated. All of that funding would be something we wouldn't be eligible for if we do not vote for this. And we learned today that we stand to lose the funding that we have for the Exit 20 reconstruction off of Route 3, which is a $2 million value, if we don't vote the sin, the stick. Here's a long list of all the grant programs, and it's not a complete list, because they continue to add grant programs almost on a weekly basis, for which we will no longer be eligible if we don't pass this zoning. And here's the carrot. As of today, the state has approved a new bond bill worth $3.96 billion in infrastructure for only towns that have accepted the MBTA zoning. Again, we're a town that relies on that kind of grant funding to get things done in our community. So that's a large figure for us to be aiming at if we had the opportunity. Lastly, this is how other communities on the South Shore have voted. We have 12 communities that have voted in favor, we have five that have voted against, and three that are undecided at this time.
Thank you, Val. I know it's a lot of hard work, thank you.
Before we open a debate, does anyone need to see that first or second slide? Is everyone good? Sure, just raise your hand if you need to see it, because it goes up.
All right.
We know we need to see it. Do you want to put the first two slides up again? Do you want to put the first two slides up again? Sure you saw something. Is that the first slide? Okay, here's the first slide. Hold on, go back. Can everyone see the first slide now? Thank you. Second, please. Just give that 30 seconds. And this was part of your presentation, so. Next slide. At this point in time, I'd open this up for debate. Actually, Board of Selectmen, do you want to be heard? Just give me one second.
Wait, Tom.
So this was voted on by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, two favored, three unfavorable, and it was, everyone approved it by the planning board. So before I open it up to the audience, I'm going to let the Board of Selectmen state their view. Thank you.
So just to be clear, I'm speaking for myself as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Kim Emberg, 214 Indian Pond Road. I appreciate all the time and effort from both the staff, as well as the MBTA Task Force, to get this bylaw where it is today, as presented this evening. With that said, this bylaw that is before you, the voters of Kingston, it's not because our residents or elected and appointed officials wanted to rezone our community, but because we were handed a state law that requires all communities with the MBTA in it or next to it, excuse me, to zone for high-density multifamily housing by right, with the exception of Boston. I want to reiterate that this zoning bylaw that is before you, for your consideration this evening, was not the idea of our town. It was a mandate passed onto Kingston, along with 176 other communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Do I think our staff and committees and boards have done a good job giving us the best possible solution? Yes, I do. But ultimately, they are trying to make lemonade out of lemons. There's no doubt in my mind that at the end of the day, this is still lemons. Voting against this bylaw is not without risk. Should the town meeting body choose to vote against this bylaw, the ramifications are potentially significant, as you saw in those slides. We will no longer qualify for a number of grants, and we risk being sued by our own state, much like Milton. We have to ask ourselves, is maintaining local control a risk worth taking? I understand that this article is merely zoning. I've heard that argument a lot over the last year. But after zoning comes building, and this is not the solution to the housing problems we have in this town or in this state. And we, the voters of Kingston, deserve a seat at the table when it comes to how we want to grow and build, not have it forced upon us by the state. At the end of the day, I'm opposed to this article, because I refuse to support the loss of local control. We, the voters of Kingston, establish our zoning bylaws based on how we want to grow sustainably and how we want to build our community. I say no. I say no to the state representatives that voted in favor of this terrible law and these seemingly never-ending guidelines that were written more like regulations but ultimately aren't. I say no to state overreach. I say yes to Kingston, mood lighting, by saying no to the MBTA zoning. Thank you.
Hold your applause, please, it just slows the meeting down. And now in opposition, or four.
She even brought the lights down, that was pretty good. Tyler Bouchard, 217 Parting Way Road, member of the Board of Selectmen, and also the chair for the MBTA Zoning Task Force. That's a lot to say. I came, I actually ran for selectman two and a half years ago, as this is one of my primary things to shut down. I don't like state mandates, I don't like unfunded mandates, I don't like them coming into our homes and our neighborhoods and telling us what we should do. So, it's not easy, and I think most of us in this room would probably agree with that statement, but we don't always have those opportunities in front of us that are black and white. I don't like the tax code. I still pay the taxes. I don't like the federal tax, I still pay my taxes, because I don't really want to go to jail, I want to lose my house, and I kind of have to do it. And this is one of those scenarios, that you don't have to do it, you just need to listen to what the problems are in front of us. And one of the things that we are forced with, a lot of us in this room know about 40Bs, there's going to be a vote tomorrow night in the ZBA about it. If the mall goes down this road with us and we approve MBTA zoning, I believe that we are potentially, in the entire South Shore, if not the state, at the best possible situation because of the mall that we have and the situation that we have. We're not mowing down forests, we're not going to neighborhoods, we're going to a place that needs infrastructure to be built to save that mall. A few hundred units in that mall, with mixed-use shopping, restaurants, could bring incredible amount of tax rate back to our town. It's very important that that, that we don't have red tape around that mall for 20 years as it disintegrates into the ground. If you're going to, do we all want housing in this place? Most of us should and would say no. If there was the perfect place to put housing to save the town, to save the mall, that would be the place to be. And so, there's kind of this weird turnaround, where I started looking at it as we were studying it, and I started seeing that we actually have an opportunity here to adopt something that's forceful and use it to turn against the state themselves, because we can use it to then allow, we don't have to take a 40B. That mall can then, if we turn this down, they can go, and they can go to the state, and they're going to go, we want a 40B, we want 400 or 500 units. I'm throwing out numbers, I'm just throwing out random, random numbers. And the state's going to go, heck yeah, you can have it, that's the zone that we were supposed to do for MBTA zoning, go for it. And at that point, we have nothing, we have no control. And on top of that, if they put a 40B in there, that's 25% affordable housing. I don't want 25% affordable housing units. 10% works, that's what works for Kingston. And it puts Kingston in control of the housing in that area. Then, you have the ability to say, we can also keep this thing afloat with our grants, they're not a little thing, they're a huge thing. We talk about schools, we talk about cuts. I mean, last two weeks ago at our, at our meeting, we're going to have a Prop 2.5% override coming up at us, which means we're going to, we're not meeting our tax base, right? What if we start taking away all these grants? What about the, what about the conservation impact? Not being able to buy land. Buying land is my favorite way of stopping growth, because we can hunt it, we can fish it, we can hike it, we can take our dogs walking to it, that's gone. What if we can't do, what if we don't have clean water because of the new wells we have to put in? When we can't do, so we have mandates to have clean water and roads, if we can't do the infrastructure and the water, those will become the priority in this town, and will not be the schools. So we talk about this bringing more kids into schools, what if we have to pay for the entire grant that we no longer get for the water and the entire road infrastructure package that we have to do, because it has to come from your taxpayer dollars and mine? What's the schools are going to look like then? So I actually think we have a, we have a, we have a little, a little turn here. And I actually think we can shove it right in the state's face. And what we can do, okay? And we can do is we can beat this thing, because we have a smart plan, we have the perfect spot for it, and on top of that, there's going to be a bunch of towns that don't go for this thing. So why don't we go and get every single grant we can over the next two or three years, while the door is open to the Bank of Massachusetts, let's bum rush it, let's get every single grant we can and fortify our town? I am not your state rep, I am not your state senator, I was elected to represent the town of Kingston. My only concern is the town of Kingston, that's all that matters to me. Marshfield, Canton, Duck Spray, and I'm sorry, it doesn't matter. So let's go after the grants, let's secure the funds, let's get the money, and let's have control of our own housing. I know it sounds weird, talking about MBTA zoning, voting it for a yes, and retaining control, but if they go 40B, we are in deep trouble. So, I, this is a tough vote for everybody. I think we all know that neighbors, we can all be, whether it's a yes or no, we can all walk away, shaking hands, but I want to bring that before you tonight. Thank you.
So, I'm going to open this up for debate, and I can't really see, so who has the microphone? Could you just state your name and where you live? Just try to stay as close to the microphone as you can. Try again. I was blinded by the light. Testing, testing. Hi, Ashley.
Hello. I have a comment and then a question. It was just presented that this is well-planned. I moved to Kingston because it was a small town, the schools are really good, I didn't try out there to move here. My question is, are schools a reaching capacity? They're running out of physical classroom space with the number of teachers that are new and cluttered. What is the plan for our school that this was to be approved? If it isn't so well thought up, that is my first question. It's got to be thoughtful of planning, and I've also heard from police and fire that they have to relieve the call, so what is the plan for supporting them with more people being busted? I also wanted to clarify, is it that we will lose funding or we could lose funding? We could go to two totally different concepts, and the semantics there is important. Code and will are really different.
Thank you. Someone try that mic again, is it on yet? Yeah, perfect person. Can someone from the back try to address that microphone, please? Is that microphone working while we're at it? All right. They're already taking funding away. Go ahead.
Well, we're being told by the state is we will lose our funding. And if, if they go as far as the school funding, then we're really in deep. And I don't think that anybody here can make a plan for how to handle the schools. Right now, we're in a deficit. If we don't pass this, we'll be in a much larger deficit at the schools. I would, I would estimate, guessing, class sizes will be larger than ever unless we raise our taxes a larger amount of money. It's working now. But it is my understanding that we're being told that we will lose our funding.
I guess the question is, has the state offered additional funding for school, fire, and police?
Negative.
Town council just wants to address real quick.
The legislation that was passed just days ago for the $3.9 billion has an absolute requirement that you are fully compliant with the MBTA bylaw. So it's not interim compliance, it's full compliance, and that is expressed in the legislation itself, if that helps.
Sir?
Kevin Johnson, 5 Summer Street, and just wanted to follow up on that state bill that was passed. So that's $3.9 billion in total among 177 communities, if everyone, if all of them approve it. So roughly, on average, that would be over $20 million per community. Does that sound right? Is there a formula for that, or is that a reasonable approximation?
Board of Selectmen, anyone know the answer to that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's, you would lose eligibility for specific grants, right? Grants are not guaranteed funding anyway. Right?
Right, but there's $3.9 billion, right?
Right, there's $3.9 billion available, and then you have to qualify for the grants, but one of the qualifications would be, the first qualification, MBT bylaw compliant.
So, over $20 million could help the schools here, for sure.
I couldn't possibly do the math, but I trust you on the division.
It's not divided out, it's not divided out by town, it's competitive. So, it's how you score.
Yep. So just a quick follow-up comment, we moved here from a community that, as the selectman who spoke in favor stated that, you know, early access to grants is important. We were one of the first in the state to join the CPA, and so in the early years of that CPA funding, we, you know, benefited substantially, because the allocation of money was relatively small compared to the number of towns participating. So, joining early is always very beneficial.
Thank you.
There's just one moment, one question that wasn't answered about the schools, getting, what are we going to do about growth and schools getting larger? In my opinion, we don't have much control over that, because that piece of property's going to get built either way. What we have control over is whether or not, if we adopt the zoning, we're in the room to help design it. It'll be 10% affordable versus, it'll be 10% affordable. Maybe we can negotiate to have part of that be 55 over, which means there wouldn't be kids involved in it. So we're in the room, right? If we adopt the MBTA zoning, we are in the room to negotiate what that building looks like, because they are bringing this to the table. The owners of the mall are coming to us and saying, let's work together. If you say no to it and they go 40B, and we all know what a bleep show 40B is, it'll be 25, sorry, it'll be 25%, 20, it'll be 25% low income, and they can do whatever they want. So that's the answer, is, we don't have a lot of control over it, but we have a little bit if we, if we retain the MBTA zoning as a vote of yes.
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn, 7 Frank Street, Kingston, Mass. I just wanted to have a clarification that we are still in the water moratorium as of right now, and that, would that affect any building on this property if we were to vote that at this point? And also, just as a point, I, I would agree with Tyler, that I think people are surprised that I would vote yes to this, because I actually was a selectman for four years. I trust Valerie Masar very, very much. I know when this came down, it was very much something that we all were against, and I, myself, am very much against. I went to every meeting I could possibly get to fight this in our town. But I can tell you that if it's not now, it will be. It's not going to be an or, like we have now, it's going to be an and. So, we just voted down over at Silver Lake, over at, over at Sacred Heart, you know, that huge infrastructure over there, but they're all going to keep coming in. And at this point, we have really a perfect spot in the town right now to be able to do this, and we're not building it, we have to zone for it. Yes, it could come down that we have to build it, but it's going to come in, in somewhere in this town, and the legislature is coming down on us, and Valerie has done an amazing job of trying to do what we can. We have 282 involved in that, so if you don't do that, you have 850 still to build somewhere else.
Valerie, would you like to answer the water question?
Yes, the water moratorium will apply. I want to say that the mall is a redevelopment project, so it already has the water rights for what's there. So redeveloping it using the same water rights would not be affected by the water moratorium to the extent that they're using the same water system that, that they already have.
Yes.
Damian Baird, 109 Summer. I had two comments. First, as far as, you mentioned the mall being, considering being a redesign. I am under the impression that Target has some contract that means that nobody can compete with them on most of the products that they sell. And that, I feel like, is something you'd need to look at, as far as if you're redesigning the mall, it really impacts who can come in and do business and the things that they can sell and offer. And then, the other thought that I had was, so, they're coming at us with, with the carrot and stick approach, and here's the requirements that we need you to meet. To what extent are they able to then, next year, change the rules, the year after that, change the rules? How, how protected are we from, from moving old posts?
So, no one can predict the Spanish Inquisition. All I can say is that Target, as far as I understand, has a non-compete for groceries, but not all of the products that are there. And we've been talking to the new mall owners for two years, and they're doing a great deal of research and have expertise from all the work that they're doing across the nation on several of these types of redevelopment projects, and I trust their expertise in bringing us something that would be successful. So we can't predict the state.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Alexis Lanzalata, 15 Summer Street. Firstly, I just want to thank the Planning Department and the Planning Board for their work on this. I think the area that you picked makes really excellent sense, and like you said, if there's an area to do it, this would be the place. I also think, you know, I know it's Um, I also think, you know, I know it's tempting to compare to other communities, but, uh, this is a unique situation, um, as the, uh, select board member who spoke, I'm sorry, I don't recall your name, yes. But, but as you, uh, mentioned, just because we have something different than these other towns have, so I think that is something to keep in mind. Um, and also, just with regard to, um, school enrollment, because that is, I think, a very legitimate concern. Um, school enrollment, you know, it, it ebbs and flows, and, you know, in 2000, uh, from 2000 to 2000, you know, uh, 2013 or so, the enrollment for both schools was higher than it is now. Um, and I know that the current kindergarten class, I think it's a high of 195 right now, but in 2000, it was 188, and then it's gone down, and it's just, it's just the flow of, of what happens. Um, and so I do understand the concern with, with potentially adding, uh, units, but that is something to keep in mind. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out, because I hear a lot of people talking about Milton and waiting for Milton, but, um, town council hopefully will correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, Milton is not challenging the actual law itself. So, in other words, the law is what says, you know, 15 units per acre, half-mile radius, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, primarily what Milton is, oh, and they're not challenging whether they can withhold funds. Um, they're challenging the, um, the guidelines, uh, and the process by which the state developed the guidelines for it, um, which is kind of, you know, how they calculated the, the units and whatnot. So that is just something to keep in mind, you know, hoping to wait and see what Milton does. It's not gonna make the law go away or the ability to withhold funds.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Vanessa Vercade, 109 Summer Street. I guess I just wanna go back to why this is all happening. Everybody here in the room has an address, that's how we came in the room. There are a lot of people who don't have an address, that's why the state's trying to address this homing, homeless access to housing crisis. There's people involved. But I also think that, um, you know, they're trying to make this an MBTA relationship, and that mall right now is not a place you can live without a car. And it would be really nice if it were accessible to the T. I know that, um, the COVID, you know, cut off people going to work in the city and stuff like that, but, um, that train goes back and forth, and a lot of times it's empty, and I don't wanna be like Plymouth and lose it, 'cause I think public transportation is a really great thing. But the other thing I think we have to keep in mind is that the mall originally was a commercial taxpayer. Residential taxpayers don't really make us money, they cost us money. So we just have to keep in mind the fact that when we fill that whole place up with people, we are gonna need schools, we're gonna need all of these other things, and maybe that's where the grants come in, maybe that's where the balance comes in, but I just have to keep, like, thinking that this is all because there are people who don't have addresses to give to come into this room. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for just new information, new questions that haven't been asked or raised, um, 'cause we're gonna take a vote pretty soon, so, uh, yes.
Brian Conney, Dierun Road. I just confused on one thing, the mall is not compliant with the law, but the law requires full compliance, is that correct?
The mall is fully compliant with all the laws that apply to it.
No, I'm saying, uh, it's not within the right zoning limit, distance, is that correct?
No, it is, the, the state granted us a waiver so that we can use the mall.
Do we have a legal waiver, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, it was said earlier, it's, full compliance is required, but we have a waiver.
We have a legal waiver, and this has been pre-approved by the state.
And the, and the PowerPoint said no waivers are allowed, under the law.
They've granted us a waiver for this. They don't give you grant, a waiver of the rules and regulations. There are only a handful of towns that were granted a legal waiver as we were.
Okay, thank you.
To the left, uh, yes, ma'am.
Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street, also worked for the Jones River Watershed and have worked with the town of Kingston, uh, for many years, um, uh, applying for state grants, getting state grants, every, virtually every open space in Kingston except for Petuxit Park and, and Camp Nicon has been acquired with the help of state grants. And, uh, all of the stormwater upgrades, all of the infrastructure upgrades that has improved the Jones River so that we have fish back, we have access, uh, now to, to Silver Lake, if, if we could straighten down a few political issues. All of that is essential to the health and well-being and the enjoyment of the community. I, I am very impressed with the, the planning that has gone into this, I think it's brilliant. I absolutely, um, support it 100%, and I think it is the best chance we have of growing rationally, um, growing in a way that we like and can enjoy, and, and thriving in a future that's gonna bring a lot of challenges, and we're gonna need a lot of state support. And, um, I urge everybody in this room to vote favorably for this.
Thank you. Again, new information, new questions, nothing that's been said already. Yes.
Doreen Quinn, Three Rivers Drive. I actually have a question. Um, page 13 of the document that you provided when we walked in talks about, um, number one, section 9.7 of the zoning bylaw, um, will not apply, and I know that's part of Article 10, I believe, tonight, the omission of that as in the bylaw. Um, I just wanted someone to comment or provide context on it, because when I read the bylaw, it actually, it's the intent of this section to regulate the rate at which residential construction occurs without imposing undue economic burden on those involved in the housing development, ensure periods of accelerated residential growth will not disrupt the town of Kingston's long-term capital improvement process, or adversely affect public safety or general welfare of town residents. So if that's part of Article 10, and it's going away, and I understand the MBTA as part of this act, um, doesn't want it to be a component, doesn't want it acknowledged, so I guess what are the long-term ramifications of not having that, and coupled with what other developments are being put in Kingston besides Hillcrest that we have on the table?
I don't know what Hillcrest is.
It's the one behind, maybe I have the wrong street, the one behind the elementary school?
Oh, the proposed 40B.
Hilltop, thank you.
The proposed 40B. There's no other developments in the community because we have the water moratorium. There's one subdivision that's been under construction for two years, and I think that's it.
Okay, but as far as the 9.7 bylaw, how does that impact things? Especially if it goes away completely out, outside of the MBTA?
One of the reasons that we have this, and that's a separate article, but I'll address it here, is because when we went to apply for grants this year, yet another rule was changed, and they took away the ability for any towns who still have this on the books. This is old 1980s zoning language from when, after the highway buil- uh, was opened up in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, there was a huge building boom. And most towns put this kind of language in their zoning bylaw to encourage phasing of development. But we have waived that on recent developments, including the Trammell Crowe apartment building as a town, because we needed the units constructed, and it was waived. It's no longer something that's viable, and we also would like to remove it from the zoning bylaw because it prevents us from being eligible for many of the grants I showed you on this slide.
Last one.
Brad Randallton, Gray's Beach Road. I've been to this town meeting many years, doing everything I can to oppose anything that would cause development in town. I'm here to vote in favor.
This isn't, no, it's a question, we're not, I, you're gonna vote, you're gonna be voting, nope, stop, sir, sir.
If you're sick of development, vote in favor of this, because your planning board will be able to say no, and stop deforestation, stop destruction of our natural resources. This will give us power, it will not remove local control.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question.
If you want, yes, you can have a question.
Sorry, um, so then...
Say your name, please, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Kate Caron, Kennedy Road.
Thank you.
So in the handout, it says we're required to increase the multifamily capacity by not fewer than 805 units, and from what I'm hearing at the mall, it's 282 plus, what another, 150, so where do the other few hundred come from? Where, where do those go?
It's 805 units total, we have 282 constructed. The part A, the one that's got the, uh, businesses on it, is 150 units, and 282 are constructed at the mall, and that leaves you with about 350 or so at the mall.
Can we do that numbers again?
805, less the 282, which gives you roughly 500. 151 on Marion and Gallon Drive, so that's...
So 350 at the mall, as you're saying?
Whatever that mall, whatever that difference is, it's around 350 and change, a little bit more than that at the mall.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you snuck in, go ahead.
Yep, last one. Uh, Jason Edge, Pondview Drive. Uh, the 282 units that are at the mall now, do we know the capacity that it's at?
I don't understand the question.
Is it fully, is it fully occupied?
Is it occupied?
It's fully occupied.
And what tax revenue has the town received from it?
Uh, in my slides, I believe we're receiving 1.25 million. No, you got the slide.
That's for the whole mall, right?
For the whole mall, I thought that was the question.
They wanna know what tax you're getting from the apartment building itself.
The apartment building, it's, uh, 70... Uh, for the whole thing, we're getting 766, 714 on an annual basis from the existing apartments.
And do we know how many students enrolled?
34.
34? Thank you.
You're welcome. Unless this is something new that hasn't been asked.
Gabrielle Haynes, 48 Pondview Drive. I have two questions. One is the units, are they leased or they, or are people buying them? And also, are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom? And also, has anyone addressed the maximum of the traffic that will be additional in Kingston at the moment? It's very ma- we're maxed out with the traffic, so has anybody addressed how we're gonna deal with that?
So I'll start with the traffic. The mall is unsuccessful at the moment, and the roads are built for a successful mall. The roads have the capacity for the additional traffic. The question on what types of units, we're not allowed to restrict that in our zoning, so we don't know whether they'll be leased or owned, we don't know whether they'll be one-bedroom or two-bedroom.
Could they be three-bedroom?
They could be three-bedroom. There's a limit, though, to the number of units, but we can't limit the bedroom count.
Well, I'm just seeing a noticeable difference in Route 3 and the traffic accidents that are happening lately, so we're gonna create more traffic going down to the mall, so I'm just wondering how, what infrastructure is in place to address the roads, the amount of traffic? Um, it's noticeable, I think everyone in this room will say how busy Route 3 is.
So I know that the state is looking to reconstruct the mall exit ramp if we pass the MBTA zoning. They will probably not do that if we don't pass the MBTA.
So nothing's guaranteed? You're not giving us any...
I'm not the state, and I can't guarantee anything.
So I, my point is, my other question is, how do we trust this? We're being told this, that, and the other, it might be, we might get that, but how are we trusting this? Like, we're not being given any definite figures, we're not, nothing's coming at us that is really positive in the, in the factor of, like, information, like, concrete information.
Well, we're zoning at this point, we don't have the proposal before us.
Okay, thank you very much.
This is the last speaker. Go ahead.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland Lane. I just wanted to speak in regards to, um, the cost per student. Since there is not a cap on how many students may be coming out of a development like this, if we average $20,000 annually per student, and there's 50 that come out, that's a million dollars right there just in educational expenses. And I believe one of the, um, numbers that we are looking at for rev- potential revenue is around 700 and something thousand dollars for this proposal. That's just for the one at the mall that's being proposed. Um, if this goes through, we're going to have a deficit in education. Right now, we, someone mentioned earlier about the 195 kindergarteners, we're going to be looking at probably adding at least one, if not two, teachers next year, just for our current, our current population. If we're adding students at 50, um, a year that are coming out of a high-dense, um, building, then we're going to be in deficits for years and years to come. And my brother used to always tell me, just because something's on sale, in terms of, like, grants, doesn't mean you have to buy it. And if we're going to do this, just because we're being threatened that we're going to lose our grant funding, then we're going to be spending money for years and years to come. And I understand that coupons and grants are good things, and they do help us afford things that we need, but if we continue to spend and spend and build things that we can't afford, then we're going to continue to work in a deficit. So, again, just a warning, I guess, that if we have 50 children coming out of this building, that's a million dollars right there in educational expenses, that doesn't even touch on first responders, our police and fire, and their services are already at capacity, and we're looking at articles tonight for both educational expenses and police and fire expenses because of the deficits that we're currently working in with our current capacity in Kingston.
Thank you. Uh, one, we got, one, hold up, hold your applause. Can everyone take their cards out? We're gonna put this to a vote, Mr. Hickey, you can have the last word. You gotta clear the doorway so we can count, you gotta be on one side of the room or another, 'cause I had to count the vote. In the doorway, I'm not, I can't count with. Go ahead, Ms. Hickey.
So I just wanted to, um, respond to the last comments that were made. She's certainly accurate if we're looking at just the apartment revenues that are generated with the construction of these apartments. One of the things Valerie's mentioned, and I, and I just wanna reiterate it tonight, we're hoping and we expect that the, that the mall itself will increase in value from the $9 million it is to something over and above what it was in 2009, which was $98 million. So when you add the taxable revenue that we'll receive from the redevelopment of the mall, along with the apartments that will be constructed, we aren't in a revenue deficit, we're a revenue surplus. And, and it, we need to look at this in the bigger picture. We need desperately to have commercial development in Kingston to ease the property tax burden on the residents. The ref- the replenishment, refurbishment of, of the Kingston collection by, in part, constructing additional apartments on that property, which is already supported by road infrastructure, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, and I would suggest, and I'll tell Valerie, and Valerie can correct me, if there's a need to upgrade roads, if there's a need to upgrade water, if there's a need to upgrade sewer, the developer's gonna have to share in that, if it's a conventional subdivision. If it's a 40B, I'm not sure that's the case. So I understand the concern that people have about the increased cost and the traffic that we have, and what are we gonna do with, when there's more cars in the road than there are now? What we're gonna do is, the planning board's gonna study that in the planning board process, and they're going to require a traffic study, which will then, in turn, tell the planning board and the developer the improvements that need to be wrote, made to the roadways or the water and sewer, or whatever other infrastructure that is there, uh, so they, the developer can pay the cost to come in and do the developments they're looking for. I think it's important for people to recognize, if, if this article is voted down this evening, it's not gonna stop the development at the mall. What you're gonna have is some other sort of development at the mall that, that this community's gonna have very, very little say in, what it looks like, who's living there, and ultimately, you're gonna have to pay for the infrastructure that's gonna support that, that, that development, where the proposal in front of you this evening eliminates that risk. Thank you.
Thank you. So can everyone take their cards out, and can the tellers come forward? And if anyone's standing, just please don't move until the count's over. Tell her, tell her, and Frank. So all those in favor, in favor of establishing an MBTA zoning district, that means you're for it, take your card out and raise it up. Up high. Paul? Guys, put them down. Paul?
61.
All those opposed, take out your cards and raise them high. Opposed, opposed. Yes, 56. Yes, Jim? Yes, Jim? Mark, majority vote. It passes. Good luck. All right, Article number two. Folks, we still got a meeting here, please. We're onto Article two. If you can keep the voice down, please.
Don Alkemright, 218 Indian Pond Road. I swear this article will not be, well, hopefully will not be as long as Article one. There's going to be two parts to this, though, because there is a small amendment to it. So I am going to move to amend Article two to include the authority to pay... Maybe it will take just as long. All right. Scratch my original move, because apparently we don't need to amend. So I'm going to move the town raise and appropriate $14,729.73 to pay outstanding bills as printed in the warrant. This is for prior-year bills, so it's just paying off.
Open for debate, it's nine-tenths. All those in favor is passed in the article. Is it favorable by Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article number three.
Hi.
Introduce yourself.
Tricia Arietta, 3 Longview Drive. I am the vice chair of the Kingston School Committee, and I'm here to move the motion for Article three. Move the town of Kingston appropriate the amount of $60,000 for the purpose of paying costs for schematic design for a potential roof replacement project at Kingston Elementary School.
Open for debate? You want to tell us about it? Oh, I thought she did. Sorry.
I heard somebody say second. Thank you. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life for the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town of Kingston has applied for a grant from the Massachusetts School Board Authority, Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Kingston School Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer is authorized to borrow said amount under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Kingston acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project cost the town of Kingston incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Kingston, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal and said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), which is Prop. 22 1/2, and that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on the proposed repair project, the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and MSBA. That huge thing, this is my first time reading something like that, comes down to the article would appropriate $60,000 from free cash to complete a schematic design to determine the appropriate scope of work to address repairs much needed to the elementary school roof. This is also a requirement, the schematic design part of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to be eligible for participation in the accelerated repair program.
Yep, we got that. Just a clarification real quick.
So just a clarification for everybody. We apologize for the confusion. This $60,000 is being funded solely by free cash. There is no borrowing that's going to have to occur to fund this article at all. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear that it's free cash this money's coming from. Thank you.
That was just an... That was some of the word that came from the state, so it's just an option.
Would anyone like to be heard on this? Jim? Yes, sir?
Jim Sewell, 51 Indian Pond Road. The $60,000 in free cash, is it coming from the existing budget? It'll be, well, in other words, will, like the article before, it's non-recurring. So in other words, it'd be adjustments to the budget to offset the money used.
So the budget would increase by $60,000. It'd be an offsetting revenue coming from free cash of $60,000.
Great. Thank you. So not a raise and appropriate?
No. Sorry. Yes, no. I want to make sure. Yes, no, I apologize.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, I'll move this. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee, 50-50. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article four.
Thank you.
Great job.
Tyler Bouchard, 217 Parting Ways Road. Move the town raise and appropriate $98,516 and transfer $75,000 from overlay surplus for the purpose of supplementing the town of Kingston's fiscal year 2025 operating budget as printed in the warrant. Seventy-five thousand. This article supplements the town's operating budget for fiscal 2025. The approved fiscal year 2025 budget approved in May did not include sufficient funding for police training and overtime. Overlay surplus of $75,000 will be partially offset with these proposed appropriations. The remaining $98,516, sorry, is proposed to be raised and appropriated and offset by an increase in estimated revenues. This is bringing our... This is helping our police department get the training they need to be where they want to be and, in some ways, catch up to the times that they're at. And this will allow the chief that came in this spring to be able to bring in some training for our guys and gals in the force and getting some things up to speed. Any other questions?
Open for debate, anybody? All right, this was Board of Selectmen, 311. Favorable vote. Finance Committee, three to two. Would anyone from the Finance Committee of Board of Selectmen like to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll move as to... This is a majority vote. All those in favor is Article four as printed in the warrant. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Article five, please. Take a bow.
Barbara Lanson, 99 Moncel Road and Chair of, Vice Chair of the Water Commission. I move the town appropriate the sum of $1 million to pay costs of designing and permitting a new well and pump station, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, 77, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Tell us a little about it.
Sure. So we are under moratorium right now. I do want to say that I've heard a lot of comments about the moratorium being, you know, used to prevent development in town. I've got to be honest, I'm seriously concerned about those kind of comments because as a water commissioner, we're here for the safety, the quality, and the cost of your water to keep those as high and as low as possible. We are at the point now where we are over-pumping from year to year what we're allowed to do, and the DEP is, you know, they're not going to be too concerned with that. It's a temporary sort of thing. But if we keep that up, we're going to be having some serious issues in terms of what we can do with our water. We need a new well. And irregardless of development, that's a planning zone, our zoning board issue, those sort of things, please, don't put the water needs of this community at risk because of other issues. This is something that you need in your taps. You need the quality, the cost that we have right now. We want to make sure this is going to be there for the future. So please, I urge you to support this.
Open for debate. Anyone have questions, comments, concerns? Okay. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, 50. Finance Committee, 50. Water Commission, three to zero. Capital Planning Committee, four to zero. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor as of to Article five as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries with one person in opposition. Article six, please.
Move the town transfer from prior-year unexpended articles the sum of $25,255 to the Employment Liability Reserve Fund. So this article funds an account that's used when an employee is entitled to a payout of accrued and unused vacation buybacks in the event of an employee's separation of service from the town. We recently had someone retire earlier than expected. You met him earlier. So anyway, we need to replenish this account.
Would anyone like to be heard? Favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, 50-50. All those in favor of Article six as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article number seven.
Heath Humbert, 214 Indian Pond Road, Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. This article has four projects and three motions, so bear with me. We'll get through it real quick. Motion one for project number two. Move the town authorize under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c) upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen a lease purchase financing agreement for the acquisition of a fire engine that may be acquired through the issuance of debt under General Law, I think, I believe, Chapter 44, the term of such agreement not to exceed seven years, the useful life of the equipment as determined by the Board of Selectmen, and the fire department shall be authorized to enter into such agreement on behalf of the town.
Second. So we're just going to go through this project first. So this is project number two in motion number one. So it's a replacement of the fire truck. Please tell us what we're doing there. Yes?
Just for my clarification, are we looking to maximize the amount of the term of the debt for seven years? Is that what you just said?
It's in your motion here. Not to exceed seven years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead. Tell us about the fire truck. I'm sorry? Tell us about the fire truck.
Well, the fire engine, we believe, will need to be replaced in three years. If this motion passes tonight, we can place an order for the replacement fire engine right after the meetings, I understand it. The current engine has had some problems with transmission work, electrical work. The factory was giving us three years build time for that engine. It's how long it takes to complete them. During the two meetings, we discussed the fire engine. That went up by as much as 60 to 90 days. So we're well over three years at this point. So we have, in order to have continuity in service of our fire engine, we need to order now so that when we receive, it's there and ready so we can retire the other engine.
Would anyone like to be heard? Okay, so we're going to move on motion one, which is project two, which is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the, as project number, motion one, excuse me. All those in favor of motion one, project number two as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes with minimal opposition.
Okay, motion two, I'm going to read it a little different than it is in your handout. I'd like to thank the fundraisers and the people who donated to help prepare the playground. That's one of the two projects in this motion. This is for projects one and four. We have adjusted the number based on the donations that were raised. So move the town appropriate and transfer from free cash a sum of $204,000, sorry, $204,740 for public safety, radio upgrades, and elementary school playground repairs.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You get the, you're doing the playground and the radios, correct?
Yes.
Okay, got that? That's why I wrote it down.
Okay, the motions are based on the funding sources. Funding source is free cash. The prior motion that we just moved was for lease. The playground, well, the cost is $76,000, but they raised, was it $38,000?
$44,600, because the other funds have already, so the original amount was $76,000. But I don't know who, but a bunch of people from the community raised substantial funds. That's why it's less than what you see in the article.
And the article is printed before the fundraising was completed.
So thank you for those fundraisers. So we're talking project one and projects four. Go ahead.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, $204,740, correct? So the total is, correct me if I'm wrong, $204,740, correct? Agreed? So that's what we're moving for from free cash. All those in favor of project, of motion two, projects one and four, for a total amount of $204,740, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one person in opposition. Now we're going to motion number three, project number three.
For project three, this is being funded by the Waterways Fund. Move the town vote to appropriate $60,000 from the Waterway Fund for dock replacement.
Wait a second.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead. Don't wait. Tell us about it.
All right, well, they're replacing some wooden docks which are rotting over in, I believe, it's Dock Section B. They've already replaced Section A with aluminum docks. They'd like to dispose of the damaged wooden docks and replace them with the upgraded aluminum docks. It's being paid for by harbor user fees.
Open for debate? All those in favor of motion three, project number three as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Article number eight, please. Eric, can you move this? All right, thank you.
Oh, that's okay. Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. This is Article eight. Move that the town appropriate the sum of $400,000 for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facilities projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws and all costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow $400,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 127b 1/2, and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. There's more. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town. That the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow all...
That the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing thereof. And that the selectmen is authorized to enter into a project, uh, regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project. And can I turn it over?
Oh, please do. You did fantastic on the spot, thank you. Tell us about it.
Hello, Joyce Kristofowski, Health Agent for the Town of Kingston. If anyone has any questions. Uh, this fund is really just meant to help anyone in need of repairing the septic system by taking out a low-interest loan which is paid back over a course of time, agreed to through Old Colony, um, Planning Commission.
Seeing nothing, this is a two-thirds, is favorable by Board of Selectmen, Board of Health and Finance Committee unanimously. All those in favor of Article Eight as printed in the warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article passes unanimously. Article number nine?
I'm back. Uh, this one is much shorter. Uh, so Article nine, again, uh, Eric Crone, forty-three Longwood Circle. Uh, move the town authorize the submission of special legislation to change the maximum age of special police officers to seventy years of age. So basically what this is, is, um, yeah, thank you, thank you. We're having a harder time, uh, getting police officers to work details. So by changing the age to seventy years of age for the special police officers, it opens it up to a, a bigger pool of folks who are ready, willing, and able, uh, to do the job for us. Um, Chief, is there anything I'm, I'm missing? All right. Any questions? What is it?
Sixty-five. It's a great idea, I like it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously as to Article nine. Article ten. You're busy tonight, Val.
Yeah. Valerie Massard, one Schofield Road. I move that the town amend the Kingston zoning bylaw by deleting Section nine point seven as presented.
Is this the one you discussed earlier?
This is discussed earlier. It's important for us to be eligible for grant funding.
Open for debate? This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Plan Board unanimously, two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article ten as printed in the warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with two people in opposition. Article eleven.
James Sewell, fifty-one Indian Pond Road, Chairman of the Wage and Personnel Committee. Uh, Article eleven, uh, move that the town vote to amend wage and personnel bylaw by amending certain positions and grades and classifications set forth in Section sixteen as printed in the warrant.
Tell us a little about it real quick.
Um, this is basically adjusting, uh, the, uh, wage and personnel, um, schedules. We, uh, moved the grade of the office administrative water from grade five to grade six. Uh, they were the only position that was, uh, uh, exempt, not in grade six. Uh, everybody else in grade five was hourly. And then we, um, based on the water moratorium and some other things in the town, we've, uh, we had our, uh, Commissioner and Zone Enforcement Code Officer leave, and, um, we've decided through the administration, through Keith, that it was better for us to have a building zoning officer which would take care of the, um, projects, uh, additions and so forth that would happen in the town. Uh, that would be less expensive for the town at that position rather than a community development officer. So there are two adjustments to the wage and personnel guidelines.
This is favorable by wage and personnel, favorable by the Board of Selectmen. I'll open it if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing nothing, I'll move Article eleven as printed in the warrant, the majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve, transfer of town-owned land to conservation. Pine, you like this one? Way to step. Val, you're killing it tonight, Val.
Val Massard, one Schofield Road. I move that the town vote to transfer the town-owned property identified uh, in the article as Tax Map forty-one dash six to the care and custody of a conservation commission for conservation purposes and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute and record any and all documents to effectuate the same.
Do you wanna tell us about it? Or should we just vote? No, come up here real quick. Pine wants to hear this.
Uh, Matt Pennella, Kingston Conservation Agent. Uh, this is just a small lot on West Street so that we can get a small parking area for the Henrich Conservation Area behind Tommy Bouchard's house. Uh, we took a lot at Springtown Meeting in twenty-twenty-three, and it turned out to be too wet, so our own regulations backfired on us. Uh, and this one is drier, so we will be able to get a small parking area in, uh, if we can get that transferred available, if anybody has questions.
Oh, great presentation. All those in favor, uh, no, I'll open this for debate. Anyone wants to be heard? Seriously. Okay, this is a two-thirds majority vote, favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by Conservation. All those in favor of Article twelve as printed in the warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article thirteen, only two left.
Tom Bombardier, thirty-nine Roundhill Road, uh, Chairman of the, uh, Waterfront. Uh, I make a motion to see if the town will vote to approve the reduction of the Kingston Waterfront Committee from seven members to five members, or take any action thereto. Uh, currently, uh, through the years, the Waterfront Commission has grown from three to five and all the way up to seven members currently. Uh, we've had two open positions for years, uh, actually for over a year and a half, and reducing the size down to five, we can actually vote, uh, with a smaller amount of people, to make additions and improvements down at the waterfront.
Anyone? Nobody wants to hear it tonight. Uh, move, wait, just check my... What?
What do we do? Whoa.
Can you just repeat the question? No one heard the question.
Uh, the question was, uh, what does the Waterfront, uh, Committee actually do? Uh, the new Adina boat ramp last year was all done by the Waterfront Commission. We got a stake ramp down there. Uh, it's used by a lot of people now throughout the town, and it, it's a great addition. What we're doing is, uh, we're looking to make more improvements down there through the years, uh, coming up, so that's our goal over the next few years. So we'll make more improvements.
Okay, that's a good explanation. Um, approved by the Board of Selectmen, four zero, and the Water Committee, uh, I'm sorry, Board of Selectmen, five zero, Water Committee, four to zero, majority vote. All those in favor of Article thirteen as printed in the warrant, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Article fourteen.
Jean Landis Norman, Chairman of the Recycling Committee. Move the town vote to amend the public health and sanitation bylaws as printed in the warrant by deleting that language shown with a strike-through and adding that language shown as underlined.
What do you wanna do? Tell us about this.
The original recycling bylaw was approved in nineteen ninety-two for residents only using the town transfer station when the majority of residents were using the transfer station for the disposal of trash. A little bit, okay. Okay, in recent, it's a lot of feedback. In recent, um, let me see. In recent years, more residents have opted to hire private trash hauler. In twenty-seventeen, the Board of Health instituted a regulation requiring all private trash haulers to also provide for the collection of recyclable materials in conjunction with the regular trash. The town recycling bylaw was not updated to reflect this new requirement for all residents. This amended bylaw will codify the requirement that all residents must recycle appropriate materials no matter how or where they dispose of their trash.
Would an, would anyone like to be heard? This favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Recycling Committee, this is a majority vote. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to thank the two police officers in the back of the room. I'd also like to thank the custodial staffs for helping us out today. I move that the motion to adjourn Sunday requires a majority vote. All those in favor of adjourning this special meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, have a great evening.